And we are live, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the February 8th, 2024 Joint Special Hybrid Meeting of the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Planning Commission. I'm Mike Murphy, the Planning Commission Chair. Parks and Recreation Chair Peter Struck is co-chairing tonight's meeting with me remotely. This evening's hybrid joint meeting is being brought to you by Zoom. We welcome anyone wishing to watch the meeting live, to join us via Zoom or at the Mercer Island Community Event Center. Welcome to all and thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Chair Murphy. This is Peter Struck. Parks and Recreation Commissioners, please have your microphones turned on for the roll call. And Deputy City Clerk Estrada, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Peter Struck.
Here.
Vice Chair Paul Burstein did ask for an excused absence. Commissioner Jody McCarthy?
Here.
Commissioner Don Cohen?
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Marksen?
Commissioner Marksen is present. She's joining via this way.
Thank you. Commissioner Rory Westberg? Commissioner Rory Westberg? And Commissioner Ashley Hay?
Here.
Thank you.
Planning Commissioners, please have your mics turned on for the roll call. Deb, please call the roll.
Thank you, Chair. Chair Mike Murphy?
Here.
Vice Chair Adam Regev?
Here.
Commissioner Kada Hughes?
Here.
Commissioner Carolyn Boatsman?
Here.
Commissioner Angela Batazzo requested an excused absence. Commissioner Chris Gels?
Here.
And Commissioner Victor Rashis?
Here.
Thank you.
For this meeting, we continue to use the Zoom platform. Chair Struck and I will do our best to recognize you in the order from for in which your hands are raised. After being recognized, you may then ask your question or make your comment.
Our first item of business this evening is public appearances. This is the opportunity for anyone to speak to the Commissions about any item except items requiring a public hearing, any quasi judicial matters or campaign-related matters. Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone who has signed up for appearances that wishes to address the Commissions?
Thank you, Chair Struck. We do have two individuals who have signed up this evening. Our first speaker is Meg Lippett and our second speaker is Dr. Gary Robinson.
Okay, thank you. Tonight's agenda will include in-person public appearances and remote public appearances via Zoom. Individuals wishing to address the Commission may do so in person or by Zoom or telephone, provided they register with the Deputy City Clerk by 4:00 PM today. When it is your turn to speak, you will be called by name. Remarks must be addressed to the Commissions as a whole and not to individual Commissioners or staff members. Any persons making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks or who become boisterous, threatening, or personally abusive while addressing the Commissions may be requested to leave the meeting. Please speak audibly and state your name and city of residence for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. When your time is ended, I will thank you for your comments and move to the next speaker or item of business. Staff, please promote the first speaker.
Chair Struck, we have Meg Lippert. She is joining us now.
Good evening. And the floor is all yours, Meg.
Good evening. My name is Meg Lippert, Mercer Island. Good evening, Planning Commissioners and Parks Commissioners. Thank you for your service to our community and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. You may know me as a parks lover and advocate from my years co-chairing Concerned Citizens for Mercer Island Parks. But in addition, I speak to you this evening as a parent and as a grandparent. And I say speak because I have already put in writing and sent to you what I want to say to you now, which is, please protect our parkland. Protecting our parkland means setting parameters that will be specific, long-lasting, and effective so that future City Council members cannot, for whatever reason, vote to permit a parking lot, construct a building, or increase impervious services surfaces in any of Mercer Island's parks. We citizens have seen how pet projects of a business, a constituency, a developer, or a group of citizens, even a group with an admirable mission, and even our own City Council members can propose a project to be constructed in our parkland and then get it approved. These proposed projects have required months and sometimes even years of intense, dedicated, and expensive effort by island residents to finally defeat so that our community parkland, which was left to us as our legacy, could be protected for the generations following us. Citizens have protected Pioneer Park, Kite Hill, and Mercerdale Park multiple times from pet projects that seemed unstoppable. Much time of council members and staff, not to mention citizens, has been spent on fights against these projects, some of which took years to defeat. Please, it's time to stop this nonsense. All we citizens are asking is to finally, effectively, clearly, and unequivocally protect our parks. It's not rocket science. Just clearly create boundaries on park development and construction that put the following six protections in place. Number one, leave parkland for recreational uses and facilities only, not uses as, quote, "free land" for government offices or other non-recreational uses. Two, substantially reduce the proposed height limit of buildings within the park. Three, no net increase in impervious surfaces. Four, limit transit stops to the rights-of-way. Five, do not allow parking structures in our parks. And finally, six, do not allow a future rezone of a park without a community-wide vote. Taken together, these six limitations will protect our parks for our children and also for our grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Clerk, the next appearance, please.
Thank you, Chair. Our next speaker is Dr. Gary Robinson.
Gary, you're on mute.
Thank you. As a representative of the Concerned Citizens for Mercer Island Parks, a 501(c)(3) organization, I emphasize that our community's exceptional quality of life doesn't emerge by chance. It results from diligent oversight and judicious choices, particularly in preserving our parks, which are central to Mercer Island's livability. Parks significantly amplify our residents' quality of life. Recent developments have threatened to erode this quality and other initiatives that could transform parkland into non-park facilities. These actions undermine the essence of what makes Mercer Island a desirable place to live. To safeguard the future of our parks and by extension, our community's character and well-being, we advocate for establishing a dedicated park zone. This action would preserve the intended use of these spaces for recreation and protect them from being repurposed for unrelated municipal activities. A park zone represents our collective commitment to maintaining the island's natural beauty and the lifestyle we hold dear. I join Dr. Lippert in urging the community and city officials to support measures that keep parklands designated exclusively for recreational use, excluding existing government buildings, significantly lower the proposed building height limits within parks, prevent any increase in impervious surfaces, confine transit stops to designated public rights-of-way, prohibit the construction of underground or above-ground parking facilities within park zones, ensure that future changes to park zoning are subject to a community referendum. By taking these steps, we can protect our parks and continue enjoying the high quality of life that defines Mercer Island. Thank you for considering these necessary measures to preserve the natural assets that enrich our community.
Thank you. If there are no further appearances, we will now move to special business. The only item of special business this evening is to discuss and update on the park zoning code development process. And for that, we welcome City Manager Jesse Baugh.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission and Parks Commission. Thank you for joining me tonight and for having me. I am supported tonight by Deb Estrada, as you know, helping run the meeting. Andrea Larson is here, our City Clerk. And I also have David Linehan from Madrona Law here, although I I don't know that we'll need you, David, but thanks for jumping in. I have a presentation this evening, which largely follows a staff report. Give me just a moment. Let's see if I can get the screen shared. Has everybody got that?
Looks good.
One more adjustment on my end and then we'll jump in. Okay. Planning Commission, Parks Commission, I feel the need to take just a step back and share a little bit about the city facilities issue that is going on right now, particularly related to the closure of City Hall. I did not include this in my staff report, but given the emails that have come into my inbox, I just am concerned that there's confusion about how City Hall interplays with the park zone discussion, and I want to address that right out of the gates. I guess before I jump in, though, this is our agenda for tonight. As I just mentioned, a facilities overview, a brief touch-in on the 2024 comp plan update. Like to talk a little bit about the 2022 PROS Plan, not in depth. Look ahead to the park zone and then really conclude with an opportunity for both Commissions to talk with each other about this process reset and how best that you all will work together. All right, getting back to what I wanted to start with first was just to share with you what's going on with City Hall, as I am concerned that that is coloring the discussion of the park zone. And let me be as clear as I possibly can. The city is not intending to put City Hall into a park. There is not one circumstance where a City Council member, a staff member, including myself, or any of our consultants are discussing that scenario. It has simply not come up. I am, just yesterday, I had an email from a Commissioner saying, can you please explain why City Hall is going into a park? It is not. It is absolutely not. That is not the plan. So let me tell you what is happening and hopefully correct the record. I'm not going to dive into what happened with City Hall. We have a Let's Talk page that, for better or worse, provides incredible detail of what happened in April 2023 when we discovered, initially discovered asbestos in the HVAC system through all of the testing, all of the work we did to try to figure out a solution, and ultimately, the City Council's decision to permanently close the building in October 2023. It has been highly impactful, very disruptive to both the city staff and the community, and has been a large focus of our work in 2023. So what was actually supposed to happen in terms of long-range facility planning? And you can see one of the buildings there in our parks. That's the Luther Burbank Admin Building there in the screen. The original plan was for 2023, 24 to be a long-range facility planning biennium. If things had gone as planned in 2023, we would have done Facilities Conditions Assessment for six facilities, including City Hall, the Public Works Building, and the Luther Burbank Admin Building. We would have then taken that information and spent 2024 working on that long-range facility plan. What is our plan to replace, repair, renovate these aging buildings, of which there are a number? Unfortunately, City Hall, the closure of City Hall just has completely derailed that work. And it's raised a lot of concerns, I think, for all of you. What is the plan? So here's where we are, and I will mention just on Tuesday night, in addition to City Hall, we presented the Public Works Building Conditions Assessment to the Council. It is not good news either. Maybe not a surprise to those of you that are familiar with that structure. It is also in need of replacement. And the reason that we moved forward with doing the assessment work on the Public Works Building is because both City Hall and the Public Works Building need to be planned for replacement now. And while the Council didn't vote on that direction on Tuesday, I think the consensus is definitely there that as we head into our next steps and the work we have in front of us, we will be planning to replace both buildings. Again, neither are contemplated to go into a park. But in the meantime, and this is really important, we have to keep our existing buildings open and operating, including that Public Works Building, which has a number of issues. We are relying heavily on the Community Center where I'm presenting from tonight. This definitely, this building does more than parks and recreation. It is your emergency operations center. It is also the home for your City Council meetings and eventually your Commission meetings as well. Luther Burbank Admin Building is in the same position. It is the home of the Youth and Family Services Department. It has always housed Parks and Recreation staff. And currently, out of sheer emergency, our Police Department is operating there. So I have great concerns as your City Manager about maintaining flexibility for these buildings. I know the vision of some is that these buildings that are in parks will be dedicated exclusively for parks and recreation. That's just not practical right now. But we have important work ahead of us. We have two buildings, one that's failed, one that is close, and that is where we are turning our attention. Next steps. March 1st, the City Council will hold their planning session, which is a fancy term for their retreat. And they have put facilities planning on their agenda. They just approved their agenda on Tuesday night. We haven't prepared the staff materials yet, and I have some more time I need to spend with our Mayor and Deputy Mayor and get ready for this meeting. I anticipate some of the things we'll start talking about are our workspace needs. We did an early analysis in October of the types of functions the city is performing. You know, what modern facility needs do we have now? Our needs look very differently than when most of these buildings were either constructed or acquired. I think we're going to start, again, very early work on what teams belong together, who needs to be co-located. I'll give you an example of some things we're talking about, just the staff and consultants. Your maintenance team includes a sewer team, and when they come in from working in the field, they're filthy and disgusting, and they need to shower and launder their clothes. Often, the Police Department finds themselves in the same position. They need to come in from the field and shower and do laundry. So we need to think about, again, I'm really down in the weeds, is that, are those services best provided in the same building or in separate buildings? So that's the stage we're at, looking at all of the pieces and how they best come together. The timeline is really important. You will hear me say this repeatedly over the next year and in years to come. There is a real urgency to get your Police Department, your maintenance teams, and your emergency operations center rehoused. We do not have buildings that are seismically rated at where they need to be. Of course, police is displaced right now. This is a real concern, and I believe the Council shares that concern. Something else I anticipate, and I'm getting way ahead of the Council in making this comment, but I've received enough feedback, as have they, about whether or not some city services belong in the town center. Note, I'm not saying Mercerdale Park. That absolutely does not say Mercerdale Park. But there has certainly been a conversation about a city presence in town center. I anticipate, as the Council picks up this discussion, that will be something that will come up and they will discuss. They haven't made a decision. I want to be clear, we're in the very, very ground-level planning phases. And more, right? There is so much more to get into. Community engagement, what does the community need? What is your vision for these replacement buildings? Costs, financing, how we bid and designed the project, and more. So that's where we are. That's what's happening with the buildings. We have a Let's Talk page where we're tracking along with this. I know the Council is really eager to start discussing this in public meetings, and we certainly look forward to your input. I want to conclude and say this again because I really am a little bit concerned that there is a room out there that we have a secret plan to put City Hall in a park. That's just not the case. That is not at all what's being worked on. It's not on the agenda. So before I go on, is is there any questions you have about facilities? And thank you for letting me go off script. I just wanted to get that out there right now. Let me see if I can stop sharing here for a minute. There we go. Oh, looks like my camera turned off. Sorry about that. Commissioner Raisis, it looks like you have a question?
Not a question, but more of a comment. Certainly, I can't speak for confusion from other Commissioners. But there was no confusion on my part when this was presented to the Planning Commission a few weeks ago. And I think we have to separate the issue of intent with the issue of the possibility. And in the Planning Commission meeting, I asked CPD Director Jeff Thomas if, under the current proposal, could City Hall be placed in Mercerdale Park? Not will it, or was there an intent to place it there? But could it be placed there? And the answer was yes. And there was a caveat around that, around impervious services. But again, I think we have to separate the issue of intent and the issue of the possibility in the future. All of us here on this call are not going to be on these Commissions or in these positions forever, and we can't predict what a Council four years from now, 10 years from now, 20 years from now will want to do. And I think the intent that at least I was looking for, and I think we've heard comments from the public on this, is they would like to severely and strictly limit what happens in our parks, including the expansion of government buildings in our parks, regardless of whether there's an intent or not.
That is a great segue, and I appreciate your candor. As I dive into this next section of the presentation, and it is actually with that desire in mind, Commissioner Raisis, we know the language did not quite, the language in the preliminary draft, park zone, did not quite hit it. I received quite a bit of feedback, and I take responsibility for the rollout. I think there were a number of things that we could have done differently. As you all have observed, and certainly in fielding all the emails and comments that I fielded, this is a tough code to write. I do believe it was the right thing to pause the legislative review process and send it back to the Parks Commission. And, you know, Planning Commission, I want to acknowledge you. I have seen your schedule. I know the volume of work on your plate. I know how many meetings you are going to have between now and July. So this this needed to go back to the Parks Commission, and that was my recommendation. I've also, I want to say this, many of you took the time, thank you, to go through the code, to go through the presentations, to say comments and questions. We have all those catalogued. They are part of the record, and it will be my responsibility to respond to them as we work through the review with the Parks Commission, and it comes back to the Planning Commission. So that time was not wasted. I just didn't get to it for tonight. But if I may, I'm going to attempt to share again here and dive into the rest of the presentation. All right. This is a slide that most of you have seen. Just to remind you where we are, we are working on a comprehensive plan update, also called a periodic review that is required for all King County cities to be completed by the end of 2024. We actually started this work all the way back in 2021. I was looking at our schedule earlier today, and the Planning Commission has been engaged really significantly since last year. So thank you again for that. Many of you, I'm not sure the Parks Commission has seen this graphic. I think the Planning Commission has. You know, the comprehensive plan is required by state law. We have a lot of inputs and requirements, mandates, if you will, that help us shape the comprehensive plan. In fact, right now, more than in any time in my career, we have a very long list of state-mandated housing-related comp plan changes. And that, in fact, we've stood up a whole housing work group, representatives from the Council and the Planning Commission to tackle that really extensive body of work. We are also making a number of other updates. If you look back on the directions, the charge, if you will, from the City Council, it was a surgical update. We're working on an economic development element. We will be incorporating a new Parks and Recreation element. So a lot is happening with this very important comprehensive plan, and so we take all these inputs into the comprehensive plan. Parks and Rec Commission, if you haven't seen this graphic, and then they inform everything else we do, our regulations, our capital budgets, our plans. I do wish the arrow for the plans was kind of going both ways because as is the case with the PROS Plan, the PROS Plan was adopted two years ago, and it's actually intended to be incorporated into the comp plan. That's something that's on our our work plan for this year's comprehensive plan update. So that's just a zoomed-out graphic on the big picture of the comp plan. Speaking of the Parks and Recreation-related work, I wanted to make sure I shared this with the Parks and Rec Commission. There's really two key items, and I've mentioned them both already. One is a new Parks and Recreation element. Element is just a fancy word that we use when we're talking about the comprehensive plan to refer to the chapters or sections of that comp plan. And what's on the work plan is to create the new Parks and Recreation element and incorporate that 2022 Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. So some of the emails that came in from the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission were, where is the policy guidance for the park zone? Well, it's in the 2022 PROS Plan that hasn't been yet incorporated into the comprehensive plan, excuse me. This is also the way we plan to address the Climate Action Plan, which was adopted by the City Council last year. It will also be incorporated by reference into the comprehensive plan this year. The park zone was also put on the work plan for this comp plan update by the City Council. The park zone requires both a comprehensive plan amendment and revisions to our Mercer Island Municipal Code. So what brings us here tonight? We presented a preliminary draft of the park zoning code to both the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission. We got a lot of feedback. Some of it you've heard tonight. I made the decision to pause the legislative review process, which is referring to the formal process that the Planning Commission was undertaking, and to return the draft park zone to the Parks and Rec Commission. So Parks Commission will be coming to you the first meeting in March. Hold on, I've got one of those boxes popping up telling me to do something. Upon completion of their work, the Parks and Rec Commission will hand off a recommendation on the code. You will actually be doing code work to the Planning Commission on May 8th. I've already gotten some comments. Jesse, this feels too fast. It's very aggressive. Can we have more time? My message to the Parks and Rec Commission is, let's try. Let's see how far we get. If it turns out that we do need more time, I will carry that message and that recommendation to the City Council. We can only update the comprehensive plan once per year. That is just the rule. So if it doesn't happen this year, it needs to go to next year. I know the Council really feels this is a very high priority, something that they committed to, and they'd like us to see if we can get that work done this year. All right, hold on a second. There we go. The PROS Plan. In 2019, we started working on a new Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. We call it the PROS Plan. We started the work, and then we stopped the work because of the pandemic, and then we started it again. It really spanned almost a three-year process in total with that almost one-year pause in between. with that almost one-year pause in between. Extensive community engagement process. We ended up running two surveys because the first one we ran was before the pandemic. We ran another one after. We had some open houses. We met with the Arts Council and the Open Space Conservancy Trust. Something else we did is we had a member of the Arts Council and a member of the Open Space Conservancy Trust join the Parks and Rec Commission as we worked through the plan. And after all of that, a lot of work, a lot of meetings, your new Parks Plan was adopted in March 2022. One of the things I want to mention about this plan is something I'm particularly proud of is we knew the old Parks Plan was outdated. And so this was a wholesale rewrite from the first sentence to the last sentence. It was a lot of work, but it's something we're really proud of. And it's actually a very recent planning document, one of the most recent accomplishments, planning document accomplishments of the city. So when you look at the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and I've pointed all of you to this, it's really Chapter 4, although there's policy throughout the document that serves as the policy framework for everything we do in Parks and Recreation on Mercer Island. This is where, and it's structured as goals and objectives. But what I wanted to point out, this was in your staff report, is Objective 1.1 specifically called out protecting our parks land. And it says actively pursue options to permanently protect parks and open space through conservation easements, zoning changes, or other strategies. So this is where the work item for this Park Zone rests. I do want to point out, however, the Park Zoning Code was not anticipated to be the only tool we pursued. It is one tool in the toolbox. And I think one of the things I am concerned about is asking the zoning code to do more than the zoning code it is intended to be. But know that this was an important objective identified in the PROS Plan. I will also point out that last sentence because I have an open space Conservancy Trust member in the audience tonight. We also identified potentially transferring some or all of the city's open space to the Open Space Conservancy Trust. The City Council has not put that on the work plan yet, but that is something that we identified as a possible next step. I won't read this, I promise you. But as you look at Chapter 4, you've got, everything is broken out under eight goals. And within those eight goals are the objectives, one of which I just referenced a moment ago. The other thing I did not call out in the staff report, but I wanted to here tonight, is as you go through the plan, many of the chapters include a section at the very end called Future Initiatives. And these were identified because you've got the goals, objectives, and then there were just some key things that were clearly standing out as we developed the plan as future work items. And the Parks and Recreation Commission felt strongly about, you know, capturing them. So you can't read that tiny font, but this excerpt is from Chapter 9 of the Open Space Chapter. And what it says is, again, reiterating Objective 1.1, is to determine the most effective strategy for protecting open space lands in perpetuity, exploring various mechanisms such as zoning changes, conservation easements, deed restrictions, and transfer of these lands to the Open Space Conservancy Trust governance. So again, as Parks and Rec Commission, as you're picking this work back up, there are multiple places in the PROS Plan that we need to look for policy guidance, and I just wanted to share those as an example. What about the other plans? We have a lot of plans. We have a lot of plans that relate to parks and recreation. I think I shared with many of you the link where most of those are saved on the website. The PROS Plan is intended to be the umbrella, that kind of, the overarching umbrella for everything else. The Park Master Plans, we have a Cultural Arts Plan, Open Space Plans, we have other plans. In fact, I put this example together just to give you an idea. For Pioneer Park alone, we have at least six different planning documents that some way, somehow touch how we manage Pioneer Park. The PROS Plan is the umbrella, but you also have the Pioneer Park Forest Management Plan, the Forest Health Survey, an urban tree canopy assessment, our Open Space Vegetation Management Plan, and the Pioneer Park Master Plan. Okay, that's a lot. It's a lot to get our arms around. When we adopted the Parks and Recreation Plan, we really worked hard to align the PROS Plan as the umbrella with all of these other plans that are still active and being used to guide how we manage and steward our park system. Another question I got, is the PROS Plan policy or is it operational? It's both. If you've looked at it, you will note sometimes we're talking about how we're managing a park, and sometimes we're talking about policy related to park. It is, and that was by design, it is intended to be both. It provides that foundation for decisions related to planning, acquisition, developing, maintaining parks, open space trails, and recreation. And it goes further than that because it also provides policy guidance for rec programs, special events, and arts and culture activities. It's very, very broad in that regard. I will ask you to keep in mind, as we work on the Park Zone, that all of the work we do should tie back to the Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, and that includes the Park Zone. Let's talk about the future Park Zone. I've already mentioned this. Planning Commission, you know this, you do this work all the time. Parks Commission, this may be newer to you. Creation of a new Park Zone requires us to amend the comprehensive plan and revise the Mercer Island Municipal Code. So we have both things in motion right now. I've already mentioned the PROS Plan is our guiding policy document for that work. And this has been really the crux of the conversation over the last few weeks, is that taking that policy framework and translating into zoning code is really challenging. And I'll show you why in just a minute. I'll give you an example. That's also why this needs to go back to the Parks Commission, right? They are the stewards of the PROS Plan. They know these planning documents really well. I think that they will take the public comment and make an informed recommendation. As many of you know, most of the properties, and I'm not even going to show the zoning map right now, most of the parks' properties are zoned residential. There are some exemptions, some exceptions to that. One of them is Aubrey Davis Park, which is zoned public institution. So that's what we're working with, is we have complicated zoning. We have residential zoning in place in most of the cases for parks, and we desire to move those properties into a Park Zone. So I just want to walk you through some examples. And Parks Commission, I started to work on the staff report and the presentation for your meeting in March, where we'll do a dive into, you know, all of those things that are in the Park Zone, the proposed Park Zone, and talk through them and go back and look at the policy language. But just to give you an idea of the work we have ahead of us, and I think this will also be helpful for the Planning Commission, I pulled some examples. Parking is an example, right? There have been concerns expressed about parking in the Park Zone, including, you know, no more parking lots. Or how much parking? Where will the parking be? No new impervious surface. So we need to go back to the PROS Plan and look at what it says about parking. And it does say some things about parking and access. This is not intended to be a comprehensive analysis. The Parks Commission will be doing that. But I just went through and pulled some of the objectives out that address parking. The first one, which falls under the category of Goal 1, relates to ADA access. We know from the work that we've done as a city, our park system is not accessible. It's falling short of those goals, woefully short. And this was called out as a high priority, you know, ADA access, as a very high priority. As you go further into that goal section, there's Objective 1.14, which actually speaks to street ends. And if you read that objective, it says, you know, where appropriate to enhance public access to waterfront facilities. Access to waterfront facilities was a very high priority. And it also says to look at opportunities where achieving ADA access is feasible and improve parking options. This was pretty hotly debated. This was a hot debate. In fact, I wish Commissioner Westberg was here because I remember talking about this with him a lot. Moving forward, as you get into Chapter 2, which is on Maintenance and Operations, here again, as an example, there's an objective about providing amenities at our parks facilities, including trails and open spaces. And here again, you see that word, those words, where appropriate and when feasible, to improve the user experience and access. Objective 3, an environment and sustainability, and this is specific to open space, providing appropriate public access, common theme. And it further says to support passive recreation and parking where appropriate and feasible. In fact, I read this objective out loud to somebody, and he said, that is terrible policy language. That is not specific enough. I will tell you, it's not very specific, but it reflects the challenge of the conversation we had when we were adopting the PROS Plan because we could see some examples of where it would be appropriate to put in an ADA parking spot and other examples where it didn't make sense. Pioneer Park was a perfect example as well. We got a lot of feedback about the lack of safe parking at Pioneer Park. Now, I'm not saying we're going to put a parking lot in Pioneer Park. I do not want to read that. I said that on social media. That's not what I'm saying. But it came up, right? We had a lot of people say, I go to Pioneer Park, I have to park on the shoulder. You know, we need to do something about safe parking. So Parks Commission, this will be your charge. And again, this was just an example, not all-inclusive, to figure out how we translate these objectives, goals, and the other policy language in the PROS Plan to be actionable in the Park Zone. And that means the development regulations, restrictions, or requirements. You know, it's the whole range. I have another example. The Planning Commission, I watched your last meeting. I think you very thoughtfully were moving towards a tiered approach for the Park Zone. We recognize we have parks that have a much higher intensity of use, like Luther Burbank, and I'll show you a slide in just a minute. Initially, as staff, we looked at a tiered system, and we wrestled with it, and we moved away from it. But after the comments we've received, I think that's probably the right path. Your PROS Plan does this sort of. We have a whole section on parks classifications. It's Chapter 5. We do this largely for a variety of reasons. It's a requirement for state grants to have your parks classified. So there's a start. We have regional parks. Luther Burbank is a regional park. Aubrey Davis is a regional park, all the way down to mini parks, special facilities, and open space. Trails are a little bit different. They're addressed in Chapter 8 of the PROS Plan. That's where they're inventoried, and that's where they show up. So I think we're on the right track. I appreciate the feedback and the thoughtful discussion about a tiered approach. And Parks Commission, if you haven't watched the last Planning Commission meeting, I think many of you were watching. I would encourage you to go back and watch that discussion. So let's pick another example, Luther Burbank. I put together a little photo tour here of just some of the things we have going on at Luther. We have, on the far right there, the Luther Burbank Admin Building, which houses the Youth and Family Services Department, among other city services. We have the Boiler Building on the waterfront, which is undergoing renovation right now for seismic stability. You have a shoreline, obviously. You have playgrounds. You have an amphitheater. And in the bottom right, I assume all of you know, but we also have a caretaker's house, what was a former caretaker's house that we use for maintenance and natural resources. So we have a lot going on. I didn't show a picture of the tennis courts, but we have a capital project happening right now at Luther Burbank. We're converting the tennis courts to pickleball courts. Lots going on, lots going on. You can start to realize why these zoning codes are tricky. You also have, and again, I'm just using Luther Burbank as an example. Luther Burbank is master planned. It was master planned in 2006. And the purpose of a master plan is to get down into the nitty-gritty to really identify and plan for, you know, future improvements, maintenance, operations. It's at a much more detailed level than a PROS Plan. So one of the things we have to think about is how does the Park Zone interact with these master plans? We had proposed some language in the code that says, you know, if there's an improved plan, it should be honored. But obviously, we have some more work to do. These master plans have been really important to us. We actively work these plans. Aubrey Davis Park is another example of a park that's master planned. And the Planning Commission is also starting work on a new master plan for Groveland and Clark Beaches. So these are important planning documents that we'll need to talk about how we integrate them. Again, I'm just going to keep on my tour of Luther Burbank to get you thinking. You may or may not know that Luther Burbank is not entirely owned by the city. What you're looking at in that graphic there, that blue line is the shoreline, which changes a bit over time. In purple is, the purple shading depicts the Department of Natural Resources ownership of the shoreline. So most of the Luther Burbank shoreline is not owned by the city. It's owned by the Department of Natural Resources. There's some other examples of the city operating parks or properties that we don't own. Pioneer Park is technically owned under the stewardship of the Open Space Conservancy Trust. Aubrey Davis Park is owned by Washington State Department of Transportation. So what does that mean? It just means that DNR has restrictions over how that shoreline property is used. When we, as we've been working on the dock project, for example, we have been coordinating with DNR. DNR had to improve our trail project, our shoreline trail project we did last year. So ownership is, it may or may not come into play with zoning, but I at least wanted to call out that this isn't, you know, not all the properties are owned by the city. In fact, something else about Luther Burbank is, the park was transferred to the city. It was effective January 1, 2003. The tool, we were talking earlier about tools in our toolbox to protect the parks. The park was originally purchased by the county using forward-thrust funding, and then it was developed using state RCO funding. That's the main grant source we use for parks development, all restricted, right? All of that funding heavily restricted the park. And the deed itself that transferred the park to the city is heavily restricted. So I'm pointing this out. This may or may not change our zoning discussion, but there are other tools and restrictions that we have in place that prevent Luther Burbank from becoming apartment buildings, for example. So just for awareness, in fact, I mentioned earlier, we have one audience member tonight. Thank you, Marie Bender, from the Open Space Conservancy Trust for being here. She has long been a champion of doing the work. We were just talking about it before the meeting started, of going back and really needing to catalogue and archive all of the deeds. You know, many of the properties, the acquisitions, took place long, long ago. And that is something that's certainly on our wishlist to get done. I would like to say possibly to pick up that work in the next biennium. All right, other things, other things we need to know. The Park Zone does not need to duplicate other codes. It's something that we need to look out for. Creating that redundancy is not necessary. We also don't want to create conflicts. So Luther Burbank, just today, Lain Summergreen, our Deputy Public Works Director, kind of helped me hand sketch out the open space areas in Luther Burbank Park, which are under their own regulations. There are many other codes in your city code that guide what we can and can't do in Luther Burbank. You have a Parks Code, Shoreline Management Code, Critical Areas Code, Tree Code, and more. Also, we are under the jurisdiction of other regulatory agencies, particularly for the shoreline work. We have the Army Corps of Engineers, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Ecology. We're working with all of them right now on our major shoreline restoration project at this park. Again, just context, right? Context, there's a lot of complexity. I picked another example, and this will be my last example for the night, just to get you thinking. I understand that street ends and landings have been a cause of concern. Why weren't they included in the Park Zone? Although many street ends and landings are classified, we call them mini parks in the PROS Plan. That is not their primary purpose. Their primary purpose is utilities. The secondary and complementary use is a mini park with lake access. And we're really fortunate that, you know, over many, many decades, our council leadership and staff thoughtfully worked to maintain, you know, the park access, even though most of these landings house some degree of infrastructure. I'm going to, the pictures I have up right here are Fruitland Landing, which is one of our highest intensity utility uses of any of the landings or street ends. This infrastructure includes a city pump station. That's those kind of yellow painted pumps you see in the picture on the right. We have an above-ground generator on this site that ensures if we lose power, all the sewer infrastructure keeps running. And we also have a stormwater outfall at this property. If you don't mind, I'd like to show you a map, and we can kind of geek out a little bit on Fruitland Landing, professional term there, geek out. So what you're seeing here, this is Fruitland Landing, that little So what you're seeing here, this is Fruitland Landing, that little green shaded area. There are seven sewer mains running through underneath Fruitland Landing. That first line, there's, it's supposed to be orange, but it's looking a little more green on my screen. Right along the shoreline, you see that kind of orange line with the arrows pointing towards Fruitland Landing. That is the city's sewer lake line. So you've got the sewer infrastructure interacting. But further out, you see that label, King County Sewer Line. That is the King County Sewer Line. So this little landing that we enjoy so much for our lake access is one of the most important connection points for the city sewer system and the King County sewer system. So my point in sharing this is there's a lot going on underground. And as we contemplate zoning decisions, it really does not make sense, from the staff perspective, to rezone these properties as parks. Their primary use is utilities. But there are other tools we have, and we have used them, like the pros plan, that guides how everything above the surface is used. And we do our best, certainly do our best, to preserve that access and that park-like feel. But as you saw on that previous slide, we just put a new generator in here because keeping the sewage moving is a high priority for our community as well. So there's some interesting things going on in our park system, but we're happy that these types of properties adjacent to the shoreline have that dual life. Okay, I have just a couple more slides, and then I'll wrap up. So we're actually at the end of my presentation tonight. I want to say thank you again for coming together and working with us and me on this reset. We are looking at a short timeline for this work. And as I've already said, I believe it is the council's priority to do this work this year. I'd like to try, like to try. I'm anticipating three to four meetings with the Parks Commission over the next couple of months. The March 7 meeting will look a lot like this, where we really are doing a deep dive into the various components of the park zone and looking at the pros plan. As we do our work, and if things are progressing, I anticipate the Parks and Rec Commission will do a handoff to the Planning Commission on May 8. I know that is the schedule that I think Chair Murphy just met with the Planning Department staff to review the schedule for the comp plan. So let's actually now talk about what this looks like, and I'll stop sharing. You know, for the Planning Commissioners, many of you have reached out and said, there's so much here with the pros plan and all these other plans. I don't know how I have time to get through that. Well, that's what the Parks Commission is for. So what do you need from them to facilitate your legislative review work? I mean, I'm just contemplating a very comprehensive handoff memo with an in-depth policy analysis. What other background information is useful? How can we help you? For the handoff meeting itself, what does that look like? What does that meeting on May 8 look like? And how can the Parks and Rec Commission support the Planning Commission as they work through their legislative review? I'm reminded that as we were working on the pros plan, I mentioned this early, or we had a representative from the Arts Council and the Open Space Conservancy Trust participating. So if that's something the Planning Commission needs, certainly happy to talk about it tonight. And what haven't I, you know, what haven't I covered? What other ways can we support you as staff as you continue your work on the comp plan and the park zone? And Parks Commission certainly looking for feedback from you as well. So with that, I will say thank you for your time this evening. I will stop sharing, and I will turn the floor back to you, Chair Murphy and Chair Struck.
Thank you, Jesse. That was really enlightening and raised another level of transparency that really helps at least myself and probably other members of the commissions to understand where things have been and where they're going. And I think it'll be very helpful going forward. Thank you.
Okay, this is Peter Struck. So Park and Rec Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff about the process to move this issue forward? I think as Jesse mentioned, we could kind of geek out on this conversation very quickly and get into the weeds, but really, at this meeting, we just want to keep it at a very high level, just about the process, kind of what to expect. Obviously, you know, there's still a lot of answers that need to be made over the next, probably, you know, few weeks. But with that, I'll just, I see Commissioner Cohen's hand up, so we'll start with Don.
Yes, Don Cohen. There was one comment from somebody in the public that indicated this person's belief that the drafting of code or drafting of zone stuff was going to be done by the Planning Commission, not as part of the PRC's work. And so I'd like, I take it that that was incorrect or inconsistent with what the city manager has in mind?
Yeah, that's not correct. The Parks Commission, and while you typically don't work directly on code, in this case, we're going to ask you to. And because you don't typically work on code, we have some outside help. Our outside legal counsel is going to help with that, and I will certainly be taking in the planning staff as well. What I'm trying to be mindful of is, there's a Planning Commission and a planning staff right now, you know, up to their eyeballs in comprehensive planning work. So we're splitting that work. But your handoff, Commissioner Cohen, the Parks and Recreation Commission handoff to the Planning Commission will include a revised draft park zoning code and likely, you know, an accompanying handoff memo describing how you got there.
Thank you.
PRC Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Not seeing any hands. I'm going to take a quick crack. So for the March meeting, how should we think about the draft zoning language that we looked at in our last meeting? Is that something we should just not necessarily put in the dustbin, but kind of really put in the background and say we're going to start out with a semi-clean piece of paper? Or I'm just trying to orient, you know, where we should be spending our time?
Sure. If it would make everyone feel better, you can take it and light it on fire. No. So we have some work to do. What I do recommend is, within that preliminary draft, are categories that we are going to need to wrestle down, right? We are going to need to talk about impervious surface. We are going to need to talk about parking. We are going to also need to talk about telecommunications facilities. And that's far more complicated than I'd like to get into tonight. You know, the antennas, macro facilities, all those fun things. So my plan is, for that first meeting, we are not drafting a code, but we are going to bring back those issues, be prepared to walk through where the policies lie currently on those items, look at our other codes. Coming out of that meeting, Commissioner Struck, if we can, I'd like to see if we can find consensus, you know, things that we agree on, so that then we can start revising your code language and areas that need more work. And I imagine we will repeat that over a couple different meetings.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Commissioner Cohen, again.
I can't remember whether we're talking now about things that might be useful as part of that first PRC meeting. But for example, what Peter just said about, and you said, city manager, about the FCC regulations and what kind of wiggle room, if any, there is. We need, we will need, and you will need, a specific answer to that. Not just, well, there are FCC things for small and, but bigger ones. So we need to know what can be done and what can't be done. Another example of that is ADA, which, you know, you know much more about than I do. Another one is the relevance of the Open Space Conservancy Trust. Again, I think staff tried to deal with that one as well as they could at the last PRC meeting. But for all of us, and particularly those of us who worked on establishing that trust, we need to know for sure, you know, and not just this legal stuff that lawyers say all the time, myself included, of, well, the more specific thing will control over the more general thing. We want to know, can the Open Space Conservancy Trust be undermined by anything that is in the park zone? Because if it can be, we have to consider trying to prevent that. So anyway, those are a couple of things that, they may not be the first things on the agenda, but they're things that have come up already and will continue to come up.
I do thank you, those comments. I'm tracking all of that. I want to respond to the request for information on antennas, federal regulations. The memo's already drafted. I saw it come into my inbox today. We've got an attorney that will be coming and explaining what we have control over and what we don't, and also looking at our existing telecommunications code. And we'll walk through the infrastructure that's in our park today. As you know, we have a, or maybe you don't know, we have a macro facility in Island Crest Park, you know, a structure that supports many service providers on the island. I didn't want to get into that tonight because that will take, that will take us down a rabbit hole, and I'm personally not an expert. But we're preparing to support you on that discussion when I see you in March.
Thank you. Councilmember Reynolds?
Yeah, question for the city manager. Your clarification of the role of the Parks Commission and the Planning Commission's been very helpful, but I just want to make sure, dig a little bit deeper on that. If the Parks Commission is actually going as far as writing code, is the Planning Commission just in a peer review role in effect? Or is, do they have a bigger role than that?
Well, we should talk about that tonight. The city code charges the Planning Commission with a legislative review. So this is not intended to replace that legislative review, but I think we all recognize the volume of policy documents that inform this park zone. It's pretty significant. So I would anticipate the Planning Commission would do their traditional legislative review process. But I'd like to hear from the Planning Commission before we end the meeting tonight on how can we support you? I provided some examples tonight of just some pieces of the park system and the pros plan policies, certainly not comprehensive, but to get us all thinking about how we, how the Parks Commission does their work and also how they hand off the recommendation to the Planning Commission. If I may, I'm going to just put an asterisk on that. There are other boards and commissions that touch this work as well. The Open Space Conservancy Trust, the Arts Council to some extent, and also the Utility Board. So we'll be talking about how we will work with those boards as necessary on this code work as well.
Chair Murphy, I don't see any other comments from the PRC, oh, excuse me, Commissioner Cohen, as last round.
Sorry. Well, for example, we're going to need some significant assistance. The PRC is from staff and whatever consultants you have. Because, you know, what you've heard from the public, some of the public, some of the Planning Commissioners, some of the Parks Commissioners, for example, is, we don't want to have, some people don't want to have a general statement that it's okay to have X in parks because we need utilities, or we need parking, or we need this, that the model that was in, and I'm not trying to criticize it, I'm just trying to help, if I can, help staff understand what would help us. We need to figure out how to make things more, it's really more prescriptive, right? More prescriptive rather than saying, okay, you can have government buildings in the park zone, and everything will be okay because there will be development regulations, and staff will take care of that. Again, I'm overstating, overstating it. But that's what, that's what we're all hearing from some people. And, you know, and some of us are sympathetic to the general proposition of that. Because this is not, I'm going to really be blunt on this one. This is not just protecting parks from private developers. This is protecting parks from ourselves. And that, I think, was not a, I think that wasn't focused on, I'm not criticizing that. That was lost the first time around. You can agree or disagree with it, but I think that's a pretty fundamental thing. If it's fundamentally agreed on, at least from the PRC's point of view, then we need help trying to sort of shift the way it is so that if you don't say that any kind of government building can be in the park zone, what do you need if something comes up where you need to have the police department or you need to have Public Works or something in a park? We need to understand, how would that come about? Because we don't, we don't want to foreclose that if it's something that's absolutely necessary. But I'm not telling you, city manager, anything that you're not already struggling with. But I'm just sort of saying what's on my list.
Understood.
We'll hand it over to Chair Murphy and the Planning Commission.
Thanks, Peter. I see Kate has her hand up. Why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Commissioner Murphy. I'd also like to thank the city manager for putting the brakes on the legislative review and bringing the park zone back to the Parks Commission for deliberation. I appreciate the careful consideration the city manager has had walking us through all of the existing policy framework. I feel like that was missing in our Planning Commission discussion. Some of us are more engaged with that material than others, so it was great to have that walked through, particularly the items about ADA access and the high priority the pros plan put on access to waterfront facilities. All that implies change. And there was a pretty resounding rejection of any change whatsoever from some commissioners. And I think our existing planning documents don't really, don't really say that that's what's already been agreed on. As I expressed in the City Manager Bond and Deputy Planning Director Van Gorpia email, I think it will be impossible for the Planning Commission to address the park zone until we receive a document from staff in the Parks Commission that has that tiered approach. And I'm really grateful to hear that a tiered approach is in serious consideration by staff. I was a very strong advocate for the park zone. I am primarily concerned with the preservation of open space and the increase in forest canopy. And I think those are two aspirational goals that the vast majority of parks and planning commissioners can agree on. And I'd like to propose, in terms of how we work forward on this, that we, staff and parks, consider a strategy of incremental agreement. I feel like there was a lot of hyperbole at the last Planning Commission meeting, a lot of fear-based discussion. And I think that if we got to some really good consensus and agreement about preserving open space and having a very strict set of standards around how we manage open space, I think that could take some of the heat out of some of that conversation. Change is going to happen. Anyone who's been paying attention to the housing element, all the laws that just got passed by the state. In the future, our island is going to have more permanently supportive housing. We're going to have more low-income housing. Change is going to happen. I also want to know, I really appreciate the public comment. Most of it was around preservation. I really, really appreciate that. That aligns with my values. But I also want to say, I think it's really important for us as commissioners to distinguish between public comment and public sentiment. Because we don't hear from everyone. And there's a lot of people that we never hear from. And those people have needs, they're residents, and they deserve to be considered in these plans as well. So, you know, I think this park zone's going to require a balancing act and some trade-offs. And those are going to be really hard conversations because we're going to have to work toward meeting the needs of a lot of different kinds of people. And the city's going to need some flexibility, as the city manager noted. A concept of no change isn't going to pass. It's not going to pass the red face test. So I guess my whole point here is that I would really, really hope that we can find a strategy here of incremental agreement. Take care of our most vulnerable spaces, our most precious spaces, our open spaces, our forested parklands, our wetlands, and then zero in on those other tiers. So get really good agreement where we can. And don't wait till we have a full, fully baked document to come to Planning Commission. I think that would be a mistake. Thanks, sorry that was long, but I appreciate you listening.
Thank you for the great presentation, Jesse. And, you know, I really am so impressed by the pros plan in general. So starting from that strong position, a couple of comments, areas of comment and question that I have. One does have to do with keeping the channels of communication open between our two commissions during this process. Because we did receive the draft ordinance and, you know, really had Um, because we did receive the draft ordinance and, you know, really had to very much study really hard to try to have a, some input at our previous meeting. Uh, I think that a lot of us have already prepared some comments and shared them and in writing and, um, I don't know, I think I've heard that those comments have been passed on to city staff, but I don't know if those comments have been passed on to, uh, Parks and Recreation Commissioners. So that's my first question. Will they get our comments and when will they get them?
Absolutely. Uh, the record of, uh, all of the records so far, comments and questions from PRC members, Planning Commission, uh, it's, it's at least in draft. It's, uh, and it will be handed off as part of, uh, the staff materials presented to the Parks Commission on March 7th.
Great. Okay. Thanks. And then, um, again, in, in terms of keeping open communication, since we're going to, since the Planning Commission is going to get this eventually, and since we've already started on it, we might have a couple of helpful suggestions to send over to the PRC while they have it. And if not overdone, would it be welcome if we send an idea now and then just via staff? And staff could decide whether that was a worthwhile thing to share with, with the Parks and Recreation Commission? Is that going to be welcome?
I will, uh, I, I will just jump in here and, and note that, uh, I mean, generally, and Chair Struck, let me know if you have a different preference. Uh, you know, anyone is, is welcome to provide written comment or, or public testimony, uh, at any point. I, I think it would, uh, just a friendly reminder that if you're doing so, you're, you're, you know, representing yourself and not, not the full planning commission.
Sure.
I imagine other board members, uh, may want to do the same thing. Chair Struck or any of, either of the chairs, do you have any uh, advice or guidance on that beyond what I just said?
Uh, I don't have any more guidance because given what I'm learning about our projected schedule, uh, and meetings, I'm not sure if we would have much bandwidth for the Planning Commission to actually have time to discuss and make a commission-based, uh, recommendation. So it'd have to be individual comments.
Okay. And thank you. That, that kind of answers that sort of area of questions. And then the, uh, other area that I wanted to mention is I'm thinking about how the, uh, pros and the parks element will be integrated with the existing comprehensive plan. And it's interesting, so far for the Planning Commission, anything to do with the park zone has been presented to us as an amendment to the land use element. We have seen, you know, many months ago, a proposed new policy in the land use element to create a park zone. So I just want to ask, is there truly going to be a separate parks element in the comp plan? And then the other part of it is that there's probably about thirty policies right now in the land use element appearing under goals, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. The headings on those sections are a little bit garbled. You know, sometimes you see parks policies mixed up with just general natural resources policies. You see things that are probably critical areas policies. I just want to recommend and, and ask if it is planned to tease out these policies that are in, in existence and get them moved over to the parks element if that's where they belong. Um, get them retitled as critical areas policies. Um, there's quite a bit of what I would call open space policies there too. So I'm, I'm just wondering if this sort of confusion in terms of what's in writing is probably going to be cleared up by this comp plan update.
You are, uh, spot on, Commissioner Botsman. Uh, the council, as part of the scope of work that they approved for this comprehensive plan update, identified creation of a new Parks and Recreation Element. Our comprehensive plan does not include that element currently. Most cities or many cities, I should say, do. Uh, but keep in mind, as, as you do that work, so yes, you're correct, there are little nibbles of Parks Recreation, Open Space, related, um, information and the other elements. Uh, that may be cleaned up. It may be removed. It may be removed because it's now covered in the pros plan. Uh, Jeff Thomas, your planning director, Allison Van Gorp, your deputy planning director, will likely be, um, this is coming to you. It's part of your work program, uh, this year. But remember, the, the Parks and Recreation Element is not intended to replace or rewrite the pros plan. The pros plan really is the framework for that new element. And, and Jeff will explain this to you, our planning director. The intent is to adopt by reference. Right? The Parks, uh, and Recreation Open Space Plan, which has frustrated me my whole career. Uh, it has to be updated every six years, right? So the way we incorporate it into the comp plan is by reference.
Mm-hmm.
That plan will always be off cycle from the comp plan. So yes, everything that you described, the cleanup of that old, uh, text, incorporation of the pros plan and new Parks and Recreation Element. And there's another new element. I'm not sure what it's going to be titled, but it will address the Climate Action Plan. So that is all on your work plan. You haven't seen it yet. Uh, I think Chair Murphy just saw the schedule of the work ahead. Uh, so you're, you've been tied up with your housing worker groups and the other work, but yes, that's coming.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, had three questions real quick. Um, I guess we're, you're mentioning about with, with the city hall closure. Um, you're talking about flexibility in having to relocate the police department and others. Um, how is that achieved right now, given that like Luther Burbank is residential? Was that achieved through a conditional use permit?
That's a good question. I don't have, uh, the list of conditional use permits for the city buildings at hand.
Okay.
I'm happy to get back to you on that.
Sure. I, I think that would be very useful information to know, cause, you know, I don't see government or city services as an allowed use in residential, but somehow it, it happened given these unpredictable circumstances. So I think that would be in useful info to help the, 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 you know, both our commissions in drafting, um, future parks zoning words. Um, question number two, is there any update on the Aubrey Davis topic? Any updates with, from WashDot or, or legal?
No, not, not Knights meeting. Uh, this is, uh, I, I think, uh, Commissioner Giebis, excuse me, Vice Chair Giebis referring to is that uh, most of the Aubrey Davis Park, the underlying ownership is the Washington State Department of Transportation. And the primary use is right-of-way, although, uh, the secondary use is parks, right? And we have been able to, uh, through lots of great work and previous leadership, uh, be able to use those properties in that way. Uh, so we'll be covering that as we get in, uh, to the Parks and Rec Commission work. And that is one of those properties that has a different zone zoning designation. It's, uh, primarily public institution.
And, um, third question, or I guess more of a, more of a comment, since I've heard uh, the tiered approach discussed, you know, at least twice already today. Um, I'd, I'd like to give a quick opinion or some thoughts on that. Is after our last planning commission meeting, I, I, I can see the differences, right? We have different park classifications. I think the term intensity of use was used. Um, but I would, I, I would like to caution us. I think, once again, the zones should be protecting the parks from, from our two commissions, from, you know, future city councils. Um, and, you know, if we take care of our most vulnerable spaces, what about those other spaces? I'm, I'm just concerned that were we to create a tiered approach, that could be exploited, right? Um, I think of, you know, lions chasing, um, you know, a herd of zebras, right? That lower tier is going to be a target. People are going to say, why wasn't my park in that lower, why was my park in the highest tier? Why wasn't it in the lowest tier? Perhaps we end up protecting only the higher tier parks with a community vote and the lower tier parks, a simple city council majority. And that's, that's, that concerns me. Um, so I'm, I'm just, I'm a little concerned by, you know, I, I just wanted to voice those potential concerns of adopting a tiered approach because it will, I, I think inevitably it will put a target on certain parks and not on others. Um, so yeah, that, that's all. I just wanted to voice that opinion since that topic has been, uh, breached twice already today. Thank you.
Council member Reynolds.
Have a question that might be jumping the gun a little, little bit, but I think it's fundamental to many of the things we're talking about, so I'm going to throw it out anyway. Can you just explain to me, Jesse, um, can the council legally vote to restrict its own power in the future? Like, could, could, could we say this will require a three-quarters council vote? And if we did, could we just vote to undo that three-quarter council vote later? Is that even possible?
And we, it's a, it's a circular problem. Uh, I don't have a solid, on-the-ground legal answer for, for that question. So I, I'm going to resist. I will say, I, I've seen some emails come in and suggest that the zoning code be written to require a vote of some sort. Well, that zoning code could be undone by the council, right? So I think you're, uh, that, that gets into the, the circular nature of this, right? So I, I would need to dig in more to the tool, uh, that's being proposed. Um, to really understand what it looks like to establish that, you know, whatever the regulation, tool, rule, requirement is, and then what it looks like, um, to, to change that.
It, it does seem like that this issue of, you know, protecting us from ourselves, uh, i- i- is a common theme and commentary we're getting. And I think it'll be important to get some legal advice on to what extent and how can we do that?
Yep. Um, understood. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, uh, Council Member Reynolds has a very good point. There are restrictions in the law about tying future legislative hands. And, uh, I think definitely need to look into that before this process gets moving. Because that's, that's a key issue among many of the commentators. Commissioner Cohen.
Uh, yes, uh, that's the reason that the Open Space Conservancy Trust was created thirty years ago. Again, I'm not claiming to be an expert on, uh, on any current sort of basis on that. But that same concern came up then, and at least at that time, the, the best that could be done legally was to put Pioneer Park into, uh, the trust as it exists now. I don't know. So it's not, it's not a new subject. There may be new answers. I don't know.
Carolyn.
Uh, at my request, Adam Zach shared with me, um, the ordinance forming the Open Space Conservancy Trust. And then another, that was nineteen ninety-two. And then another in nineteen ninety-six where it was amended. And it was just really interesting to see how it's put together. Um, the trust originally was seven members, uh, one council member, three from an existing parks board at the time, and then three, I think, were at large. Um, and it took a vote of five people, which I, I guess that's a super majority, if that's the correct term. Five of the, of the board members would have to vote in favor of removing any property from the trust. So that's the higher level of standard. That however, is just a recommendation. That's a recommendation to the city council. And under that same resolution establishing the trust, again, the city council would also have to vote five in favor to remove any property from the trust. Now, the Parks Board, I don't know what year that was disbanded, but the, um, the ordinance in, or the resolution in nineteen ninety-six removed the three Parks Board members, because I guess there wasn't a Parks Board anymore. So then I presume at that point, you had one city council member and six at-large uh, Open Space Conservancy Trust Board members. But, um, I guess a couple of things seem really interesting to me, you know, adding more land to the trust, for one thing. A lot of our open space that's not in there now, if that's possible. But also, we have a Parks Commission now. So I thought it would be kind of a cool thing if our Parks Commission were again, represented on the Open Space Conservancy Trust, you know, as voting the, the three that were removed to be replaced. So just, those are some ideas I thought were, um, found, I found very interesting to contemplate.
Any further questions from the, uh, Planning Commission or the, um, Parks Commission? Seeing done, I think we're ready to move on. Anything else, Jesse, you want to add?
Uh, Chair Murphy, before we conclude the meeting, I, I, uh, and, and not to extend it, I thank you all for giving of your time this, this evening. I, I just want to make sure that we've sufficiently discussed uh, from the Planning Commission, you know, what would be most helpful, uh, from the Parks and Rec Commission. And I've heard, um, a lot of suggestions. I will tell you from a staff perspective, when the recommendation comes from the Parks and Rec Commission, we anticipate a robust, robustly and well-defended recommendation, including lots of policy citations and, and how they concluded, how they reached the recommendation. But if there, is anything else that comes to mind this evening or in the future about what would be helpful? Uh, again, I want to acknowledge the workload of the Planning Commission right now. Uh, the comprehensive plan update is, uh, a significant body of work and we have, uh, quite a bit still to do. So if there's any final thoughts on that, um, otherwise I've worked at the Parks and Rec Commission before. Uh, they're a fantastic group. They're very thorough. Uh, they know the pros plan well and, uh, they're well-suited for this task.
Yeah, I, I'm personally very happy to see this go back to the PRC. Uh, so they can bring their expertise to bear and their knowledge of the pros plan to bear. Uh, because that's really where it should be driven from. And then, uh, I think what your plan is to have, you know, have a robust, uh, memorandum report to go with it. I think will assist us and allow us to expedite our review. Uh, but I would recommend if, you know, of any planning commission members to, uh, to either watch or watch on, on, uh, on video the, uh, the parks uh, meetings and to keep track of what's going on if they are interested in having a leg up or being aware in real time as to how that's progressing. I know that's a lot to ask, given what our schedule is going to be, but I think it would be, it would be helpful, um, to expedite our process. Okay. If there's no further comments, um, we can adjourn. The next, uh, regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, February twenty-eighth at six PM. Uh, Peter, you want to give your next meeting?
You're on mute, Chair Struck.
Sorry about that. Thank you. Um, the next regular Parks and Rec Commission meeting is scheduled for Thursday, March seventh at five PM. There being no other business to come before the Parks and Recreation Committee or the Planning Commission. Uh, the time is now seven twenty-nine PM and the meeting is adjourned. As a reminder to commissioners, please stay seated until the city staff has terminated the broadcast. Good evening and thank you for joining us.